Welcome to the 12th in a series of political candidate forums in advance of the August 23 primary election. This forum, a cooperative production of the League of Women Voters of Tallahassee, the Tallahassee Democrat, and WFSU Public Media. Our candidates today are vying for the Leon County Board of County Commissioners District 2. I'm Tom Flanagan from WFSU Public Media. I am joined by William Hatfield from the Tallahassee Democrat, and Trish Neely from the League of Women Voters of Tallahassee. We'll be questioning the candidates on various topics, so let's take a look at the ground rules, and then we'll go on and meet those many, many candidates we are going to talk to today.
The candidates for Leon County Commissioners District 2, sitting left to right, are Sabrina M. Allen, Lynda Bell, Christian Caban, Hannah Crowe, Will Crowley, Max Epstein, and Manny Joannis. There are a lot of candidates today. Reminder for those that are watching us on social media, please hit the share button and help all your friends see today's discussion as well. Here's how the forums are going to work. We will rotate which candidate gets to answer first, and we will go down the line. We have a lot of questions, so we're going to ask the candidates to keep your answers to about 60 seconds or 45 seconds, sometimes shorter for follow-ups. We will keep time in a very technical way, and you will hear this sound when your time is up. Aggressive bell today. That's what it's going to sound like. You don't have to come to a dead stop right then, but please finish your sentence, and we're going to move on. In the middle of the forum, we will have our fabled lightning round. That is when we ask you to keep your answers to just one sentence. At the end of the forum, we will give you 60 seconds to make the case directly to voters and share your website or any other important information.
And if you are watching us on Facebook, and you have a question for our candidates, go ahead and type them into the comments section, and we will get to as many of them as we can. Time is very limited, so you can improve your chances of your question being asked if you keep it brief and polite. Make it a question that is applicable to all of our candidates. So before we begin, candidates, any questions? Okay, let's go ahead and jump in.
All righty, we will start with this one, folks. What is the number one issue basing District 2, and how would you propose to address it? We get one minute for the response, and Sabrina M. Allen, we kick it off with you.
Thank you, Tom. I think that the number one issue in District 2, what I'm hearing is that it's drug abuse. That's what I'm hearing, and people that are making drugs like right next door to a family. And it's drug abuse. Affordable housing. People say they would like a nice place to live and be able to afford it. I talked to one man, he's a single parent, and he's been on a waiting list for years. He can't seem to find a place to live. He lives on the, he's out in Bluntstown. It would be drugs and affordable housing and crime. We kept crime, that's what I'm hearing, there's crime. Those are the issues. Crime, drugs, they go together.
Okay, thank you. Lynda Bell, your turn.
Thank you. I would say a lack of amenities that we have in District 2, a lack of parks, quality roads. When you take a look at the east side of Tallahassee, and then you drive on west, you can see the clear lack there. I'll give you an example. We have two fire stations in our district, one in Woodville and one on Highway 20, that don't have ALS, which is advanced life-saving measures. They don't have that equipment. So if you have an emergency out on Highway 20, or if you have an emergency in Woodville, they literally have to call another fire truck to bring in the advanced life-saving, to start an IV, whatever you need to do. I think that's unacceptable, and I think the people of District 2 deserve better amenities. When you take a look at the lack of ball fields, the lack of activities for our children, there is so much need that I see in District 2. And that's, you know, you can think of all of the issues that are there, because there are many, there are multitude of issues. But when I listen to the people and what they have to say, and this is what I'm hearing, over and over again, a lack of amenities. And so I plan on working very hard on bringing those amenities to the residents who deserve that in District 2.
Appreciate that. Christian Caban.
Thank you. I think this is probably the most important question that we will answer today. When it comes to Leon County, you know, there's a housing affordability crisis. But specifically in District 2, after knocking on doors and listening to our constituents, there's a clear demand for high-quality infrastructure in our community. District 2 has a lack of sidewalks, very narrow and unsafe roads, there's lack of lighting, and most importantly, there's a septic tank crisis in Lake Munson and in Woodville that's right in our folks' backyard. I know there's a plan to address it, but I think we need to make it a bigger priority.
Okay, very good. Hannah Crowe, your turn.
I would agree. When knocking on doors and talking to people, again, this isn't about what Hannah Crowe and her agenda items want to get done. This is about the people and what they care about, living there every day, in and out. And so I'm hearing things about crime, I'm hearing things about infrastructure and improving our parks and our youth services. These are big issues that affect the everyday life of our residents. And so my job will to be that strong voice of advocacy and make sure that those issues that matter most to our residents are brought to the table over and over, and that I am a strategic problem solver, and that I'm creative and collaborative with the rest of the commission to make those things happen.
Will Crowley.
Yes, I've spent time across this district, whether it's Fort Braden, Woodville, southwest Tallahassee, and I have heard a lot of answers. Some people say that it's gun violence, some people say that it's affordable housing, some say that it's equitable development. But the underlying issue uniting all of these issues is a lack of public trust. We've known about these problems for a long time. There's no reason why they haven't been addressed. I don't know why they haven't been addressed. But when you look at our budget, it just does not reflect the reality, it doesn't reflect our values. I've got the background in budget and finance and public policy, and my campaign has the fiscal independence, that I can make the right decisions to make sure that we have a budget that reflects our values.
Appreciate that. Max Epstein.
So I've actually lived in District 2 pretty much my entire adult life, and I have not really seen politicians who represent us. And I think it's really important for the folks who live in our district to have someone on the county commission who will listen to them. We've heard about sidewalks, we've heard about septic tanks, infrastructure, we have Lake Munson, which is a cesspool of toxic algae. These are all things that need to be addressed, and we need someone in office who will do that. Also, I believe that the cycle of poverty is one of the biggest issues that we have to solve. Everyone says it, but why is this happening? We have city, county, CRA, and Blueprint, the same 12 people who make all of our decisions. The consolidation of power there needs to be spread out. And these decisions are moving tens or hundreds of millions of dollars that were destined for our district to the northeast and other parts of town. And we need to have a full accountability and go through those projects and reprioritize.
Thank you. We end up the opener with Manny Joannis.
Thank you, Tom. Clearly, there are many needs in District 2. Focusing on one is really not a reality. As has already been mentioned, crime, jobs, and public investment, they're the top three, and we need to provide and support District 2. I believe District 2 has been neglected. In the way of crime, I fully support Sheriff McNeil and his initiatives, and will provide all the support I can for him. As far as good jobs are concerned, we've got to have good jobs in our district. We need to be able to travel to a workplace that is nearby, $4 a gallon worth of gas, traveling across town doesn't make sense. I fully support the city of Tallahassee and what they're trying to do at the airport, which is clearly in District 2, and creating jobs there, 1,000 to 1,500. And the public investment needs to be tackling sewer, roads, sidewalks, street lighting, policing, all of that. Thank you.
Appreciate that, folks. We have a couple of follow-ups here along the same line, and we'll change up who gets to start, and then we'll work our way through here. This is a 30-second response, even though the question is probably longer than 30 seconds here. The county commission job is considered a full-time job. You've got a salary of currently $83,945. So if you could each tell us what your specific day job is now, and whether you'll continue that if elected, and how you would balance the time with all the official and unofficial commitments of a Leon County Commissioner. And Lynda Bell, if we could start with you on that, please.
Thank you. I currently, with my husband, we manage all of our rental properties, and it is a very busy full-time job. I plan on giving that up completely 100% and working 100% for the people of District 2. This is a full-time salary, it's a full-time job, and the residents deserve somebody who's going to dedicate full-time. It'd be like you going to the restaurant and ordering a meal, and they bring half of it to you and say, "Well, half is enough," right? You're paying full price, you need to get the full dinner. I'm the full dinner.
Very good. Christian Caban.
I'm a small business owner in the community. I think part of being a small business owner is building a good team to handle the day-to-day operations, and that's no different than being a county commission. You allocate and delegate to the right people. I fully plan on doing both, and I plan on being very successful with it as well.
Can you name-drop that small business for us?
It's Wolf Hospitality Group.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Hannah Crowe.
Yes, I work full-time at Hammerhead Communications, and I do plan to continue working full-time. I think it's very important not to remove yourself from everything and be caught in just a political bubble. I think most people will make their bite on the fact that I'll be full-time, but if that becomes the litmus test for being a county commissioner, how many public servants we wouldn't have got to have, and it just becomes who's not working, who then would just become a candidate.
Very well. Will Crowley.
Yes, I'm a budget analyst at FSU College of Medicine, where we make doctors and other health professionals who work out in the rural communities. And that's very important work to me. To be honest, I haven't decided what I will do. I'm focused on getting to the job first, but I can make a commitment that I will be a full-time commissioner, and I will be available at any time of the day or night, and all of my constituents will be able to access me.
Okay, Max Epstein.
I am a scientist, an artist, an entrepreneur, and also a researcher at the DeVeaux Moore Center, and I believe that this is a full-time job. I think it honestly should be a requirement. So I will put my full effort into serving our community. I will retain some hobbies and have some boundaries, shall we say. I think everyone needs to spend time with their family, but this is something that I'll be pursuing full-time.
Okay, Manny Joannis.
Thank you, Tom. Currently, I am the coordinator for public outreach, community outreach, and enrollment at Lively Technical College. I think it's very important to help students find their way in learning trade, learn the skill, and that sort of thing. I am, however, delighted to let you know that I have submitted my retirement letter to Ms. Shelley Bell at Lively, and January will be my last day.
Very good. And Sabrina Allen.
I love my job. I teach fifth graders, and they need me. I can retire, and I could retire, and I might retire. I've talked to my principal, she supports my running for county commissioner, and she will support my being able to be where I need to be when I need to be there. She told me to be sure and say that I'm a turnaround teacher. Our school made the first C last year. And just in time.
There we go. Okay, we have another follow-up question. 30 seconds again on this one. What experience do you have with understanding the needs of rural communities, which, as we know, encompasses so much of District 2? Start off with you, Christian Caban.
And this was a question that came in from a member of the audience. Thank you for that.
Precisely.
I think spending time in the community, you know, we've knocked on 3,000 doors over the last two months, we've listened to the constituents, we've listened to their wants and needs. Also, specifically, District 2 is a very diverse community, though it has a large portion of it is very rural. There are also large portions of it that are in town, in the south side, and they all have different wants and needs. And I think the most important part is to listen and address each sub-community differently.
Hannah Crowe.
My experience has been getting married and moving into that rural area. We've had decades of experience there with my family. And I started on the ground level as an advocate before there was ever a race to run, because I cared, because I want to make that area better, and my family's there. I understand District 2 is large, and I know that the work that I've done in our rural area, I can do district-wide. It's about getting to know people, getting to know the history of why they're there, and why we are where we are, and moving forward.
Okay, Will Crowley.
Yes, I understand the issues that face folks who live in rural areas, whether it's transportation issues, lack of access to resources. I grew up in rural Polk County and unincorporated Lakeland, and it's not the same as District 2, but there are a lot of similarities. And I know what it's like when you've got family members who can't access the care that they need, they can't get the services they need. And, you know, whether it's sewer issues with your septic tank or anything else, I'm willing to stand up and make sure these folks are heard.
Max Epstein.
So growing up in Alaska, I don't know if you can get any more rural than that, so I have a lot of experience. You know, I lived in the cities there as well when I was growing up, but as far as our district goes, it's the same issues. It's the sewer, it's the access, it is the infrastructure, it's the sidewalks, and I'm really tired of seeing kids walk to school on Tharp Street, you know, in the middle of the road. And I have to admit, I am not the most familiar with our rural areas here, but I'm here to listen.
Okay, Manny Joannis.
Yes, thank you. I have lived in the Fort Braden area for the past 20 years. It's been a really good experience for me. I'm well in tune with the needs of that area, and also the Woodville area. My wife has taught school at Fort Braden School for 20 years, so I am in touch with what is needed in the rural areas. For instance, like our dump needs to be open five days a week instead of three days a week. Thank you.
Sabrina M. Allen.
Would you repeat the questions, please?
Certainly. What experience do you have understanding the needs of rural communities, which so much of District 2 is?
Yes, District 2 is a rural community. I had my house built 38 years ago in District 2. So I've lived in District 2 for 38 years, and I know a lot about our needs. And it's mostly from taking, talking to people, because I have a cushiony life, I will say, but not everyone in my community does have one. And I think everybody should have a high standard of life, like I enjoy. And that's what I want to do. I want to help them get their needs met in District 2.
We'll wind up with you, Lynda Bell.
Thank you. Yes, I was the mayor and vice mayor of Homestead for six years. That is a very rural community, the farming community. When people would come south, they would get their strawberries, their tomatoes, their pole beans, you name it. And I lived there for 39 years, and I moved up here about six years ago. And so I'm very, very familiar with the needs of a rural community. I really helped tremendously. Our rural community was very tremendously involved. I won the Agriculture Award for being the agriculture advocate. I won awards in the Chamber of Commerce, as well as others, for understanding the rural community. And being here for six years really gave me a clear picture, and it's just kind of coming to fruition.
Thank you all.
Ms. Trish. Okay. So switch it up a little bit here and talk about affordable housing. Do you believe the county commission is doing all it should to support affordable housing options? And if not, what should the commission be doing? And Hannah Crowe, we'll start with you.
Well, yes, I know that this is a very pressing matter, and I would like to believe and know that our commission is fighting as hard as possible to address this issue as elected officials. What I would do and be in agreeance with is absolutely voting to extend that urban service area in smart pockets of our communities, to be able to build more affordable housing, to be creative in how we're doing that, and to be strategic in what areas of our community that we're doing it as well. So I'm proud of the work that they're doing. I would love to continue to be a part of the creative problem solving, and that's what we're here to do, roll our sleeves up and tackle this issue.
Thank you. Will Crowley.
Absolutely not. I do not believe that our leadership has done nearly enough to address this issue, and you can see that because of the problems that we're facing. I would say that we need to leverage all of our resources. We need to increase spending for social services to make sure people can afford to stay in their homes. We need to leverage our public land and stop selling it off, so that we can use that to build affordable housing on. We need to look at innovative solutions, you know, addressing our comprehensive plan, addressing zoning issues, where we can get accessory dwelling units built on people's properties with less resistance than we have now. And we need to look at innovative solutions that do harm reduction, like public lockers at our library system, so folks who are experiencing housing insecurity can make sure that their important documents and belongings aren't lost every time they leave them. So, you know, I've got the budget experience and the urban planning experience to make sure that we're taking a broad approach. No person experiencing, no two people experiencing housing insecurity have the same experience, and our policy should reflect that fact.
Thank you. Max Epstein, please.
I do not think that the county's doing enough. First of all, I think we need to stop demolishing public housing units. The Orange Avenue Development's going to eliminate about a third of our public housing units and privatize them. I also helped bring about and expose the fact that Blueprint and our local government may have violated federal law when they displaced people for the construction of Fam U Way and demolished 100 affordable housing units without replacing them. We need to not tear these things down, and we need to figure out how to get transportation services to these folks as well. I do think we need to do everything we can to invest in our public housing. And really, that's it. There's a lot of stuff that we can do, and also, we need to incentivize building inside our urban services area and empty lots inside the core without expanding.
Thank you. Manny Joannis.
I do not think Leon County government is doing enough for affordable housing in District 2. Not just affordable housing, any housing. There's a total lack of housing in District 2. If we are to create 1,500 jobs, 1,000 jobs at the airport, they're going to need housing. So someone has to be able to dig into that comprehensive plan, look at the zoning, look at all those issues. And oh, by the way, in the 90s, I had a lot of experience with the comprehensive planning and land development regs. So I feel that there's a huge need for the Leon County Commission, and as a commissioner, I will look into the ability to increase housing for that area.
Thank you. Sabrina M. Allen, your take.
I think that when developers come to town, and everywhere I look, there seems to be new housing popping up. I think that we should have the developers commit to 10% to 20% of that housing being low-income and middle-income, so that people can get into those houses. Anytime a developer builds, they need to build, have some set aside for low-income people. And we need to look at our land, our city and county land, and see if we can build affordable housing. I don't see how it could be a problem. Let's build affordable housing. What's the problem? Let's do it.
Thank you. And Lynda Bell.
Thank you. No, I don't think the county is doing enough, but the county cannot do it alone. In fact, this is where I have really great experience, when I was a mayor, as well as a county commissioner. What we did as mayor is we took some city lots, and we did infill housing, working with Habitat for Humanity. And we picked specific vetted, and we worked with the CRA, the Community Redevelopment Agency, and we picked specific targeted areas, and there was a vetting process and families replaced. I love that because of sweat equity. And then when I was a county commissioner, I did a public-private partnership with a man who had a fantastic, very large valuable piece of property, and we partnered with Affordable Housing Dollars from the county, and we partnered with him in my district, and we built senior housing. We built 101 units for the seniors, and I was so proud to see how quickly those filled up. And there's a great need for seniors in our community, and they're often overlooked. And so I have great experience in how to handle this, and I was also the budget chair of Homestead, as well as the budget chair of Miami-Dade County, and also did strict urban design guidelines education. So yeah, I'm absolutely prepared for that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Christian Caban, you have the final word.
Thank you. Affordable housing to me hits home, because I grew up in a family where we foreclosed on our home growing up, and so I know, I can relate to our constituents who are struggling with this matter. Even though I do not believe our county is doing enough, I also do not believe that this is a policy issue. I think this is a community issue. We need to attack this at the root, which is poverty. We need to get folks higher-paying jobs, we need to focus on creating smarter, equitable economic development. And lastly, we have a supply issue. We need to increase our density, and we also need to build more homes. Thank you.
All right, changing gears to crime. A variation of this question comes from the Urban League. By our count, on Tallahassee.com, 13 people have been killed, 50 have been injured, and 77 serious shootings this year in the capital city and the county. What specific initiatives will you take to make our communities safe from shootings and crime in general? 45 seconds, we will start with you, Will Crowley.
Thank you. This is an extremely important issue that we should all be paying more attention to. I've read the Anatomy of a Homicide report from the sheriff's office, and frankly, I think it takes a lot of courage to see a problem and look inward, to see how you could be better addressing that problem. What we've learned from that report, among many other lessons, is that a lot of young men tied up in these issues don't see a way out for them. And I think that we can actually do something about this. We're not a poor community, we have the resources, we just need a budget that aligns with our values, so that we can fund the social services, whether it's after-school programs, whether it's mentorship programs, whether it's, you know, startup grants for folks to start their own businesses. What we need is to give folks a way out, so that we can stop these deaths of a miseration.
Thank you. Max Epstein, same question.
So as the partner of an educator, I hear about this all the time, and how we need after-school programs, we need interventionist programs. And the anatomy of a homicide really does highlight the issues that our community is facing. And actually, four years ago, I proposed an after-school at-risk glass-blowing program for the Ash Morris property in Frenchtown that eventually got funded, $750,000 from the state. So I really think that investing in these types of programs early on to capture people who have issues, who are at risk, that is the way to address the violence in our community. That and eliminating the poverty, which everyone talks about, let's do it.
Thank you. Manny Joannis.
As I mentioned in the opening comments, I do believe crime is the number one issue. People are living in fear. They are scared in their own homes. Yes, we need to do something about it. I do believe education is the key to all of this, because you need to be able to provide a pathway for folks to think that they're successful. That's why I contribute my time at Godby High School, provide scholarships for Godby High School students through the Alumni Association. It's why I'm working at Lively, trying to, a pathway for students to find a trade that they can make a living, a good living, and be able to buy groceries. I do believe education is the key, and I do also support that, fully support Sheriff McNeil and his efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Sabrina M. Allen.
Education is the only way that I know to level the playing field. That's how I leveled the playing field for myself. And I think we need to make sure that those young people who are out there committing crimes, that they are kept in school. We need to keep them in school, we need to address the drug addiction, and make sure that they get an education. They do not need to be out on the street. Education is, it will deter crime. You have more to lose if you're educated.
Thank you. Lynda Bell.
Thank you. Crime is an extremely important topic, and we discussed this at our screenings with the police, the PBA and the Leon County sheriffs, and I was very proud to get their endorsement from the PBA, as well as the Leon County sheriffs. And there's the elephant in the room that nobody wants to talk about, is that many of these homes are fatherless. Many of the crimes that are being committed are committed by those with fatherless homes. If you look at the prisons, you look at how many there have no fathers in the home. We need mentoring programs, we need to partner with churches, we need to partner with the already existing CBOs. We have community-based organizations right now, and if we would take the funds that are already existence, properly fund those, work with them, and we have community centers all over, all over Tallahassee. We have the facilities that we can have these partnerships with them and work with the existing organizations, because they do a great job. Thank you.
Christian Caban.
Thank you. Any resident in Leon County? Any resident in Leon County should and probably would acknowledge that crime is a problem, specifically violent crime. But I don't believe that this is a policing issue. I don't believe that we should be trying to police our way out of crime. If you look at Walt McNeil's Anatomy of a Homicide, that data showed us what we already knew, and that is violent crime is tied to poverty and troubles with our youth. So to me, the solution to this is how are we going to continue to fight poverty and provide smarter economic development so that way we can give folks great, high-paying jobs? Additionally, we need to look at, how are we going to continue to support our youth? We know kicking them out of school is not a solution. As a board member of the Children's Home Society, I think that we need to address problems with our youth.
Thank you. Hannah Crow.
Well, I'm proud of us for having this conversation. That's the first step, is addressing what's happening in our communities. And this is happening in our communities. And the first step is supporting law enforcement, and I commend Sheriff McNeil for the efforts that he has done to look inwardly and how to constantly be improving what they're doing. I think another step to take in another initiative, which I have been doing in our community, partnering Leon County Sheriff's Office training programs with our businesses, schools, and churches to make sure they are prepared for whatever may come their way, working in our community centers and working in our libraries on the ground level. And then finally, we've said that crime happens because oftentimes people take steps in the wrong direction when they are in poverty, no access to jobs, no access to education, mental health.
Thank you. Staying with the topic of crime, we heard from numerous speakers at a recent city commission meeting that we should be taking money from the law enforcement budget and funneling it into social services. Is that a concept you support? Max Epstein.
I definitely think that that's something we need to take a look at. We had a really good opportunity with Antonio Gillum, or Gilliam, I believe is his last name, who was supposed to be our next police chief, who has enacted programs in St. Pete that do just that, that take away some of the responsibilities of police officers and put it on social services and mental health counselors and folks that know how to deal with those types of situations. So I believe it's important to take a look at the budget, to see if there's a way to shift resources or to find external resources for such programs.
Thank you. Manny Joanas, same question, 30 seconds.
No, sir, at this point in time, I do not recommend reducing funding for the sheriff's department. No, if anything, we need to increase funding. If he's got social services embedded, I'm okay with that. But to reduce his budget is not, is not where I'm at.
Thank you. Sabrina M. Allen.
I oppose defund the police in any terms, any way you say it. But I would need to look at the budget and see how the money is being spent, how the money is being used. I do think that police officers make a good salary, and we've hired more police officers, and that doesn't seem to solve the problem. But I'd have to look and see whether, how to use the money and how to get the most out of the money. But defunding the police is not an option.
Thank you. Linda Bell?
Absolutely not. I think that's one of the most absurd ideas I've ever heard. This is, you know, when I keep hearing about poverty creates crime, no, crime creates poverty. It's the other way around. Because when there's a lot of poverty in a high-poverty area, the stores leave. It hurts the minority community the most. So it's the opposite of what I'm hearing here. So when you, when you talk about defunding, you hurt the very community that you're purporting to support. So it's absurd. Also, Governor DeSantis gave all the state law enforcement a raise, but who did that exempt? That exempt the sheriffs and the TPD. They need to be compensated properly. Thank you.
Christian Caban.
First, I would like to point out that I believe mental health is extremely important, especially for our youth. But I do not believe that we should look at defunding the police or taking funds away from the police when we already have a crime problem. Instead, I would look at the, look at our budget and see if we can allocate funds from a different source, or I would look at partnering with our school board and seeing if they would provide funding to allow mental health counselors in our school for our youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Hannah Crow.
No, I do not believe that we should be taking money away from our law enforcement. And man, they are asked to wear a lot of different hats in our communities, and their job is tough, and we cannot hold them to a standard of perfection. But that does not mean that we take away their funds to do the job to keep our communities safe. I think we need to get creative in other ways. Yes, we should always be reviewing our budget, always trying to get better, but that is simply not the way to get the job done. There's other partnerships that we can create and be better problem solvers to get the job done.
Thank you. Will Crowley.
Yes, there's been a lot of fear-mongering around this issue, and anyone who's telling you that we're talking about getting rid of law enforcement either doesn't understand the issue or isn't being straight with you. I believe that we need to take a holistic look at our budget. We need an audit of all of our departments to see where we could be spending money more wisely so that we can tackle issues on the front end, which is much more efficient, which is much cheaper than dealing with it on the back end. Now, it may not be politically correct to think that way, but I'm not going to let politics influence my decision. I'm very interested in what is best for the budget.
Thank you. All right, a really quick follow-up here. On a scale of 1 to 10, how would you rate the current effectiveness of LCSO in addressing the issue of gun violence and crime? 30, 15 seconds. Manny Joanas, scale of 1 to 10.
I think the sheriff's department is doing a wonderful job in setting the path towards a victory down the road. It is in the early stage. It is not a silver bullet that's going to happen overnight. So in his efforts to retrain.
And a scale of 1 to 10?
Oh, 8.
And a scale, 8. Sabrina M. Allen.
7. I can't give the more than a 7 because of the high crime and violent crime rate in our city.
Thank you. Linda Bell?
I, I support Sheriff McNeil and his efforts, and I'd give him a 9 because I think that the plan is in place and it's, and it's ready to go. And I think we're going to see tremendous strides and improvement in what we've been, what we've been seeing in Tallahassee.
Thank you. Christian Caban.
I would like to give Sheriff McNeil an 8. I don't believe it is the sheriff's department's responsibility to prevent crime. I think it's their job to respond to crime. I think it's our job as a community to prevent crime. Thank you.
Thank you. Hannah Crow.
I would give them a 9.5. I'm very proud of the research that they are doing. There is no magic button on this issue, and I believe Sheriff McNeil would say that there's always room for improvement. So that's why I'm giving them that score.
Will Crowley.
I'm not interested in providing a numerical score. I would, I would just say that it's been inadequate. We can see the gun violence increasing. However, I'm very optimistic seeing some of the new approaches, but we'll have to see what the data says when it comes in about how effective it's been.
Max Epstein, last word on this.
I would go with a 7. If you look objectively, what's been going on is not working. We need to figure out how to fix this issue, and I also don't think that it's necessarily the sheriff's office fault at this point.
From crime to commerce, numerous neighborhoods within Tallahassee and Leon County are, of course, struggling with poverty. What role do you think local economic development efforts and development incentives play in promoting more equitable prosperity in District Two? And what's one specific plan that you'd implement to make meaningful progress in this generational challenge? Let's get a minute response on this from each of you, and start with Sabrina M. Allen.
Say it again, Tom.
Sure. You've got numerous economic development efforts and initiatives that have been proposed over the years for our challenged areas when it comes to, you know, the economy in, in our county. Is there a specific plan that you would endorse to kind of get us off of, you know, of ground zero and into a better posture?
Yes. People who are living in affordable housing, they could not be put out of it unless they have someplace else to go. I would make sure that they had a place to go and that there is affordable housing for people who are challenged, are not doing as well as the rest of us. They need a place to stay too. So yes, give them some kind of work. Make, make them earn their money. Yes, they need to work and they need affordable housing, and I'd make sure that they got it. With the developers that are coming to town, they could help. And the ones that are already here, they will help. I don't see what the problem is. I guess you don't have anybody that's advocating for it.
Thank you, ma'am. Linda Bell?
Yeah, this is always a challenge. Anytime you have an economy that's suffering like we're seeing right now, and you want businesses to come, you want to entice businesses, but you can't, you can't, you have to look at this realistically. It's not just a county issue. It's a community issue. You can't force businesses to go where they don't want to go, but you can entice them. And there's an old adage in government, it's called retail follows rooftops. And so if you take a look at every time you see, you go into a store and you swipe a card or whatever you do, they're, they're tracking that zip code. And they want to see how many people are actually shopping in that particular area. And when they see a high rate of people shopping in a particular area, then you might see another store spring up. But you can't offer incentives. Incentives like a pilot, P-I-L-O-T, which is a payment in lieu of taxes. So if you want, let's say, a grocery store to come in a rural area like we desperately need, you can go to that grocery chain and say, listen, what if we work with you, then we bring you in and you take a risk here, and in lieu of taxes, that would be a pilot, a payment in lieu of taxes. So we need to get creative to entice businesses to come to our community. Like I said, rather than a stick, a carrot. And I think that we are, we have the ability to do that. Thanks.
Thank you, Christian Caban.
This is a great question. Thank you. I think that, I think we should start by utilizing our resources that are already present to us in District Two. You know, we have Innovation Park, we have the TCC Developmental Workforce Program, we have Lively Technical Institute. There are a lot of resources that are already in our community that we should, that I believe are being underutilized to promote economic development and create more jobs. Next, I would like to work on bridging the public and private sector so that way we can continue to recruit more businesses and, quite frankly, create more opportunities for folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Hannah Crow.
We need to just continue to do, I mean, we have brought wonderful business to the area, Leon County, Tallahassee as a whole. We need to continue to do this, and at the very same time, be supportive and improving and enriching our mom-and-pop local businesses that are the backbone of District Two as a blue-collar district. So we need to be enriching them as well, building out the infrastructure to make more businesses want to come near the area, providing quick access to jobs, to education, working with Lively Tech, working with TCC, adult and community education. Sat on their council for a while, saw many a people getting GEDs and certifications to move themselves forward. It's just, again, creative problem-solving, getting, talking to public sector, private sector, figuring out how to find the best solution because there are so many different areas to serve. Something I would love to see is utilization of our community centers for financial literacy, helping bridge that gap, which I have done previously in my career.
Thanks. Will Crowley, you're up next.
District Two has been neglected and disrespected for generations. We have seen infrastructure, we have seen them deprived of infrastructure and workforce investment. We've seen an $80 million road to nowhere built on the northeast side. Meanwhile, children are walking dirt paths along Orange to get to NIMs. We had, we spent eight years of our economic, economic development dollars, almost $30 million, to subsidize luxury stadium improvements. Meanwhile, we've got school bus drivers leaving this community because they can't find housing. That money could have been used to improve our storefronts, it could have been used for training programs, and now it's gone. And, and, you know, I know, I'm not sure why our leaders are, I don't, I'm not sure who our leaders are listening to, I'm not sure where their priorities are, but the, what I do know is that they're out of step with the needs of this community. I've got the budget experience to find where the money can be moved from, and I've got the independence of my campaign that I don't owe anybody any favors when I get in there. I can listen to what the people need.
Max Epstein, you're up next.
The city, county, CRA, and Blueprint have been highly ineffective in economic development projects, from the CRA that has funneled millions of dollars into Gain Street and to other projects that do not alleviate impoverished communities like they're supposed to be designed, blighted communities. We need to have this money designed to come from the people and ideas that come from them and what they need. I think there needs to be a litmus test for how is it going to alleviate poverty? How many jobs is it going to create? We need to look at this like a bank. And you look at Blueprint, who has spent all of our economic development money. We've had great projects like Danfoss that have brought in hundreds of high-paying jobs and workforce training, but we got nothing. So what are we supposed to do now? We don't have any carrots left. I think it's extremely important that we rein in all of this wasteful spending and get the money going where it's supposed to go. The last thing, I'll have to come back to that.
Okay. Last take here from Manny Joanas.
Okay. As I believe, Tom, you said the question is commerce and support commerce to help resolve poverty issues. As a county commissioner, I want to work hand-in-hand with the city because I do think it's key to our district that we increase the amount of jobs that are located at the airport. 1,500 jobs is huge, huge. It will take, it will take a look at our enterprise zones that are already in place to expand those enterprise zones, and it will take a commitment of public infrastructure to help that happen. We desperately need more retail, more office, and better housing. Thank you.
Got a 30-second follow-up for everyone here. Homelessness, of course, also a huge issue and a ever-more-visible problem in Leon County. So where do you think we've fallen short in confronting this particular challenge? Linda Bell, start with.
Yeah, absolutely. It's really terrible, especially in District Two. We haven't taken a holistic approach. You have to take a look at the whole problem. You can't just throw money at it. You have to look at the mental health issues, you have to look at the drugs, the alcohol. Of course, there are parents who have economic homelessness, but a very, very strong overwhelming majority have these issues, the underlying issues. What we did in Homestead is we took a bunch of extra leftover land from the Homestead Air Reserve Base, and we turned it into homeless housing and built a bunch of tiny houses. But those people were properly vetted, and you know, you have to have a lot of park space for them, an outside space. So there, there is a solution to this. We have to really look at it holistically.
Okay, fine. Christian Caban.
Thank you. I think anybody who drives down Pensacola Street in the middle of the day or at night will understand that this is a severe problem in our community, and I appreciate everyone's efforts by, by addressing this. I think as a county commissioner, our job should be to listen first to the experts who are battling this every single day. I think we need to continue to make sure that they have the resources necessary to do their job. Additionally, I would like to propose a step-by-step process that's first empathetic, but second, gets folks, you know, from the streets into housing, gets their mental health and health problems addressed, and ultimately getting them training so they can get back into the workforce.
Good. Hannah Crow.
I firmly believe in compassionate action on this issue because these are people that have fallen on very hard times, for whatever reason that may be. There's no magic button to this issue. It's a holistic approach. Many of us have said this. Many programs and task forces do the same thing. And we also need to realize there's a new face of homelessness. Inflation and COVID left many people one paycheck away from being in a situation they would have never dreamed of. So we need to work together, we need to partner with people that are experts, and we need to start coming to resolution a lot faster and way more creatively.
Will Crowley. Yes, I've spent time with folks who understand this issue, like those who do incredible work at the Kearney Center. And what they've told me and what I've seen for myself is our fundamental failing is we're not treating these people as human beings. They're our neighbors. They live in Leon County, just like we do. They just don't happen to have a roof to sleep under. I think that our policies have focused on sweeping these people under the rug and hiding the problem rather than actually trying to do something about it. Poverty is not a moral failing. These people are our neighbors, and they're our family, and we have the resources to do something about it. We just lack the political will to make a budget that reflects that value.
Max Epstein.
So I think that we have the answers. We have the Big Ben continuum of care. We know how to solve this problem. It's time to fund it and get it done. And I also want to mention that mental health is an important issue, and I suffer from depression and anxiety, and I'd like to bring that to the commission, to be a representative, to talk about it. I don't hear any one of our elected leaders talking about how they feel. I hear how they talk about how other people feel. So I will be there for a representative for you. So I will be there for a representative for you.
Manny Joannas.
Thank you so much. There's no doubt that District Two has shouldered the burden of homelessness more than any other district. But it is a, it is an issue that all the districts, the entire county, needs to help address. It's okay. It's okay, because we need to take care of folks and help them get back on the path. But training, skill training, all of that needs to be part of it. And, and I'm, my proposal is to look at how to appropriate dollars to help in training, because it's not happening as well as it should. Thank you.
We'll wind up with Sabrina M. Allen.
We need to, and I would look at the mental health part of it and the drug addiction part of it. That has to be addressed. Get these people jobs and affordable housing. Get them training. But the, the drug addiction needs to be addressed and the, and the mental health issues. So I'd work with that.
Very fine.
Okay. With this question, let's start with Christian Caban. So please explain how you came to your position on the recent allocation of $27 million to renovate Doak Campbell Stadium from the money that was required to be spent for economic development projects.
Is the question, are you asking if I was in favor or against it?
Just how you came to your, to your position.
Then yes, whether you're in favor.
Okay. When it, obviously, this is a very controversial topic, so anyone in the community who paid attention could saw how divisive this issue was. I was probably, I am against providing Doak Campbell Stadium money with $20 million. I would have ideally liked to see a compromise, but factoring in Blueprint giving FAMU and TCC money, I can understand how, how the decision was made to give FSU the money.
What would that compromise have looked like?
15 million.
Okay.
Hannah Crowe.
Well, one, I just want to commend and realize all the effort that our commissioners put into this issue. It was a long time coming, there was a lot of debate, a lot of research, and some hard bold decisions that were made. And, you know, we're all here today, and we know we're going to have to make those decisions one day as well. So I want to start off with that and also say that I absolutely believe that there was, my stance is there was a middle ground to take on this issue. That would have looked like about half of the funding. Doak and our other institutions are 100% economic drivers that should be supportive. In fact, they support many other local businesses that surround where they are, that count on them to do well and be more useful than just a few games a year. So that's where I would have fallen on that issue.
Okay. William Crowley.
I was a vocal and outspoken opponent when this issue mattered, and I believe the local paper of record will reflect that fact. May 2021, issue of the Tallahassee Democrat has a quote where I'm talking about how irresponsible this use of taxpayer funds was. This is exactly the wasteful spending that has bankrupted our economic development capability. Listen, when I hire someone at the College of Medicine for $35,000 a year, I'm required by policy to interview three candidates, so I can make sure that I'm spending the taxpayers' monies as efficiently as possible. When Blueprint gave this money, they give this almost $30 million giveaway, they didn't look at three options, they didn't look at two options. They only looked at one option, and, but before we even had that jobs report, they were ready to greenlight it. Listen, and if you paid attention to this process, you would know that there was never an opportunity for compromise. A compromise was put forth and it was voted down. And frankly, the fact that we even suggest a compromise, it frustrates me because it assumes that they're entitled to that money. From my perspective, folks who have the means, folks who are flush with cash, should not be coming to government looking for assistance.
Thank you. Max Epstein.
I think it's important to realize where this came from, this money. It was originally $20 million allocated for a convention center, and then one week, with one week's notice, it increased to $40 million. And then all of a sudden, we were talking about a $40 million convention center. And then we met as citizens with all of our commissioners, and they told us that they wanted to look at affordable housing, mental health, everything that we've been talking about as a possibility for that money. Did they lie to us? I don't really know, because then the very next meeting, we were trying to put this money into the FSU stadium. It had 34 permanent jobs. No bank would ever have greenlighted this project. We need to be looking at the fundamentals and from a fiscal, you know, perspective. So that money is gone. It could have done so much for our community. I would not have supported it. And I believe that looking back and saying, well, someone else got money, is not a good excuse. You need to look at everything that comes before you equally.
Thank you. Manny Joannas, your response.
Clearly, in District Two, the economy and jobs are in severe deficit, and it needs to be addressed. I do believe that this, this project will supply many, many, many jobs for skilled workers and for trade workers. I do believe that the previous commissioner, rest his soul, supported this project for the sole purpose of providing skilled workers for this project. So I defend the previous commissioner and support it.
Okay, thank you. Sabrina M. Allen, your response, please.
I think $20 million may have been reasonable, considering that FSU receives $50 million locally from us, from the community. FAMU got $10 million, and they have 9,000 students, and FSU has 33,000. So I think that it might have been fair, when you think about, I'm an alumni, and I like FSU, I love FSU. I can't say anything bad about FSU. I think that we will get a return on our investment. I think it was an investment to renovate and fix Doak, because FSU football and the sports make a lot of money. And people come to see it, and that's revenue for us.
Okay, thank you. And Lynda Bell, final word.
Thank you. While I may not agree with Mr. Epstein and Crowley on quite a few issues, I completely agree with them on this one. I think there was no compromise, and there was no compromise that was going to be had. And I think when people say there would have been a compromise, that's false. They were looking for their full amount, and they were not going to hear anything less. And this is the problem of rubber stamping everything that comes down from the county manager's office, and this is another reason why you need to make it a full-time position, so you can study the issue and make it basically your priority. This was poorly spent, it could have been spent in many other areas, like was already, has already been stated. I don't think that there is an excuse for this. You have so many benefactors of FSU. You have so much money that is pouring into their, into the stadium and into this university. That's a great university, where a bunch of my family went to FSU. That doesn't excuse it. To say that it's an economic revitalization and economic development, those are temporary jobs. Once the stadium is completed on the construction, those jobs go away. That is not a long-term solution, and I think it was very poorly done. I also opposed it and still oppose it to this day.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to shift into the lightning round, but before that, we're going to ease into it. I've got one quick question. We'll start with you, Hannah Crowe. This is a race that is open because of the tragic death of Jimbo Jackson. How would you describe Commissioner Jackson's legacy for District Two in just one sentence? Hannah Crowe.
This hits home for sure, for us. He was involved on the ground level. He cared about his students and families, and he advocated passionately, and I'm honored to have learned from that.
Thank you. Will Crowley.
The late Commissioner Jimbo Jackson loved the children of District Two.
Max Epstein.
I think he was a terrific educator and a cornerstone of our community.
Manny Joannas.
One word, integrity.
Sabrina M. Allen.
I didn't know him.
Lynda Bell.
A great man and a great school principal.
Christian Caban.
One word, beloved.
All right, so now we're going to do the lightning round. And the lightning round, the way it works is, most of these questions are going to be kind of yes or no, or you'll have a sentence, and, or, and you can explain your answer in kind of one sentence. Of course, you can use an and, you can use a because, but we don't want too much of a run-on sentence here. So we are going to start at the top of the order with Sabrina Allen. What single thing makes District Two distinct from all others? One thing, one sentence, Sabrina Allen.
I guess it's the people. We care about each other.
All right, thank you. Lynda Bell.
We're accepting of each other.
It's a beautiful community, beautiful place to live, and the people are amazing.
All right, Christian Caban.
This is a one-word answer, diversity.
Hannah Crowe.
Diversity, the people, and the rich history of our district is wonderful.
Will Crowley.
From the Callan neighborhood of Fort Braden, from Woodville to Jackson Bluff, the people come from every walk of life to weave together the fabric that makes District Two.
Thank you. Max Epstein.
As well as being some of the poorest zip codes, we are some of the most integrated and most diverse in the entire state.
Thank you. Manny Joannas.
Diverse population.
All right, the Lake Hall Schoolhouse is one of the last single-room African-American schoolhouses that still exist in Florida. Efforts to preserve it, talk of carrying a $3 million price tag to do that. Do you support preserving Lake Hall Schoolhouse? Starting with Lynda Bell.
Absolutely. History must be preserved, and whatever the cost is, we can analyze that later, we can take a look at the budget for it, but the answer is yes.
Christian Caban.
Yes, absolutely.
Hannah Crowe.
Yes, history is why we're here today, so we must preserve it.
Will Crowley.
Absolutely. I'm in favor, especially with black history, black history being under attack in this state.
Max Epstein.
As someone who's spoken many times about this, it's extremely important, and I do not think the county has handled it well at all.
Manny Joannas.
Yes.
Sabrina M. Allen.
Yes, preserve it, but not for $3 million. I can get that price down.
All right, did we make it through, everybody? Yes, we did. Okay, this is going to be where I'm going to chat, be struggling here. All right, Christian Caban, how many county commission meetings have you attended, and how many have you spoken at and on what topics?
I have not spoken at any county commission meetings, but I've been present for multiple.
All right, Hannah Crowe.
I've attended county commission meetings multiple times over Zoom when I began really doing grassroots advocacy in my district, and I'm proud of the item I was able to get on the agenda.
You said you were proud of the item you were able to get on the agenda? What was that item?
The walking path in Fort Braden.
Okay. Will Crowley.
I have attended several public meetings. I've spoken at many as well, mostly on issues of equitable development. But it's, it's really hard to get to a commission meeting, and I wouldn't hold it against anybody.
Max Epstein.
Well, if you look at all of the boards that they, the county votes on, I'd say about 30 in the last three years. I've spoken on the fertilizer ordinance, Lake Hall, Maloney, Lake Munson, Blueprint Transparency, rezoning and others.
Manny Joannas.
I have not lately, but I served on the Leon County Commission in, in the 90s for eight years, was chairman twice.
Sabrina M. Allen.
I've watched them online. I've been raising four grandchildren, but they're all grown and out on their own, so I can be a county commissioner, and that would be, I wouldn't miss a meeting.
Thank you. Lynda Bell.
I've attended many in person as an observer. I've watched many, and I've spoken up, I believe, at three. I spoke up on the Children's Trust and on the expansion of power, and then there was one other issue I cannot even remember at this point.
What is one pledge you would make to voters right now that you will accomplish if elected? Hannah Crowe.
I'm here for the right reasons. You can trust that. I've been doing the work before there was a race to run. My family's here, I have a stake in the game, and you can trust me as a voice of advocacy.
Will Crowley.
You will never see me up on that dais and have to wonder if I'm making my decision as a favor to someone that I owe. You will always know that I'm looking out for your interests.
Max Epstein.
I'm currently working on a $3 million grant with the county to clean up Lake Munson. That would happen during my tenure.
Manny Joannas.
I pledge honesty and integrity.
Sabrina M. Allen.
My tagline is people, not politics.
Lynda Bell.
I will be a full-time commissioner. It's not a political bubble to dedicate 100% of your time to the community that is paying you a full-time salary. I have 38 years of coming back and forth to this area. I know it well, and I have the knowledge.
Christian Caban.
I will be unapologetically selfish for District Two.
Okay. As a county commissioner, you'll be working with your counterparts in the city commission. Toward that end, who will you endorse for mayor of Tallahassee and why? Will Crowley.
I've got my own race to run, but I'm looking forward, looking forward to new leadership at the city of Tallahassee.
All right, Manny Joannas. Oh, Max Epstein, thank you.
No problem. So I support all the challengers. I will be voting for Whitfield-Leland, but I support Christian Dozier as well.
Thank you. Manny Joannas.
I've had a long history of working well with city commissioners in the day when I served as a county commissioner, and I do serve, I do support Mayor Daley.
All right, Sabrina M. Allen.
I haven't made a decision yet.
Okay. Lynda Bell.
I am not going to endorse any of the candidates for, for mayor, and I look forward to working with the city commission, and I will have a great relationship with them.
Christian Caban.
I'm proud to support John Daley.
Hannah Crowe.
I am focusing on the race and diving into District Two and all of their needs. I will not be endorsing for mayor.
All right, the question I am most asked by voters to ask the candidates has little to do with the county, but it's become a litmus test for them and speaks to our democracy at large. Do you have confidence in the outcome of the 2020 presidential election? Max Epstein.
Absolutely. I think it was one of the most fair in history, and you can see that by Republican states conducting their own reviews and certifying the election.
Thank you. Manny Joannas.
I have no quarrels with the 2020 election.
Okay. Sabrina M. Allen.
The audit and review showed that there were some inconsistencies and there were some problems, but they were not enough to overturn the election.
Lynda Bell.
I do think the 20, I do think the 2020 election had issues. Did it affect the outcome of the election? I have no idea.
Christian Caban.
I don't believe there was any issues with the 2020 election.
Hannah Crowe.
I do not believe there was any issues with the election.
Uh, did I get Will Crowley? Nope.
I have full confidence in the results of the 2020 election.
All right. Please tell us your party affiliation and whether that should have anything to do with this race for voters. Manny Joannas.
My party affiliation will have nothing to do with how I served the District Two. I am a registered Republican.
Thank you. Sabrina M. Allen.
I'm a conservative Democrat.
Thank you. Lynda Bell.
I am a Republican, and I will serve as a conservative, but my party should have nothing to do, because this is all about the people of District Two, and that's where I will dedicate my time.
Thank you. Christian Caban.
I'm a registered Democrat, and I, I don't believe that in a nonpartisan race, I don't think that has any outcome on how we attack poverty and helping our youth.
Okay. Hannah Crowe.
I am a registered Republican, but I believe the number two is a lot bigger than being an R, and nobody's asking you what affiliation you are when you're doing things that I've done in our community already.
Will Crowley.
I'm a registered Democrat. I'm on the Leon County Democratic Executive Committee representing District Two. I'm proud of my affiliation as a Democrat, but I'm willing to work with anyone towards a better government.
Max Epstein.
I'm a registered Democrat, but I consider myself more independent, and I look at everything and the facts through an independent lens.
Okay. Thank you. The second most question I'm asked to ask candidates, after Roe v. Wade was overturned by the Supreme Court, what was your instant reaction to that? Did you support the ruling? Should the county be pursuing any policy as it pertains to abortion? Sabrina M. Allen.
Overturning Roe versus Wade put the responsibility back on the state. And how did I feel about that? Let's see, does the county, should the county participate in reproductive health? We could, but I think we should have pro-choice people at the table and pro-life people at the table.
Thank you. Linda Bell.
I am proudly pro-life. I'm a pro-life conservative. I'm thrilled that the court rightly saw that this deserves to be back in the states, that there is no constitutional right to abortion. It did not outlaw any abortions.
Anything for the county to do here?
I don't think it's the county's, I don't think the county has any part of it.
Christian Caban.
I don't believe that it is the government position to tell women what to do with their bodies. I am pro-choice, and I do not believe that it should be a local government issue.
Thank you. Hannah Crowe.
Here's what I will say, that now it's in the state's hands, and it's my job as the county commissioner to make sure women have all the education that they need to protect themselves and the life of the unborn child.
Okay, um, Will Crowley.
Yes, when I first heard the news, I was outraged at the assault on the freedoms and dignity of women, trans men, and other non-binary folks, and I went straight to the courthouse to join my community demonstrating against this. I do believe.
County roll.
Yes, I do believe that as public servants, we have an obligation to protect, to protect these rights.
Thank you. Max Epstein.
I think it was an awful decision, and I think the county should have resources for folks who need help to navigate the new laws.
All right, Manny Joannis.
I am pro-life. I support the decision, and I don't believe that the county should be in response.
All right, really quickly, who are your top donors to your campaign? And do you accept bundled contributions? Those are contributions that are given by the same company under multiple names or addresses or individuals who are connected. If you're needing help on who are the top donors, you can tell us who the top dollar donors, obviously, the max is a thousand. Linda Bell, we start with you.
My top donor so far is $500, and it's mostly all the people in the community, people I used to serve with, just big friends, family, and there are no corporations, no anything that I have received that would be considered bundled or anything like that.
Thank you. Christian Caban.
I believe every taxpayer and every taxpaying entity has the right to give, and the most of my contributions come from very successful local businessmen who want to support a fellow businessman in supporting his community.
Thank you. Hannah Crowe.
My top contributions have been at $1,000. I'm very proud that these are out of District Two, a majority of them, and especially from blue collar workers that are the backbone of our district. And as far as bundled contributions, those have come from close family friends who believe in what I'm doing and supporting me.
Thank you, Will Crowley.
I'm proud to say that of everyone on stage, I've got the lowest average contribution, the only one under $100. So I have no idea who's my biggest donor, but I can tell you they're not a business, they're not an LLC. I got no stat contributions, and that's why you will never have to wonder where my priorities lie.
Okay, Max Epstein.
My biggest contributor is me. I'm actually going to be self-funding most of my campaign. I think it's important to put my money where my mouth is, really, and I've had support from close friends as well.
Manny Joannis.
Like Max, my biggest contributor is me, and but I do have support from the business community.
Sabrina Allen.
I'm my biggest donor. I am funding my own campaign. I don't want to have to owe anybody anything. When I ran for superintendent of schools 10 years ago, a lady asked the volunteer, and she said, will you give me a job? I said, I'll give you an interview that's better than the opponent.
Thank you. Name one specific thing the county is not spending enough money on, and one thing the county is spending too much money on. Christian Caban.
I think we're spending too much money outside of District Two, and I want to spend more money on our infrastructure in District Two.
Thank you. Hannah Crowe.
I would say potentially having too many bundled services at one time for too much money, and then not enough affordable housing needs to be a top priority.
Will Crowley.
We're spending too much money on sweetheart deals and giveaways like the stadium deal and the $80 million road to nowhere. We're not spending nearly enough on the services and the infrastructure people need to live dignified lives in District Two.
Max Epstein.
We're spending too much subsidizing new development. It costs $3 for every $1 of new taxpayer money coming in. And I also think that we're not spending enough money on environmental preservation because that saves us 10, tens of millions of dollars down the road in cleanup costs.
Manny Joannis.
I agree with Christian, not enough in District Two, too much outside of District Two.
Sabrina Allen. Sabrina M. Allen.
Thank you, William. I think we're not spending enough money on our youth. And too much money on, I'm not sure.
Linda Bell.
Too much money on special projects like Doak Campbell Stadium, not enough money not only in District Two, but on specific infrastructure problems and quality, things that affect our quality of life in District Two.
Okay, Hannah Crowe, the county administrator serves as the pleasure of the county commission. Oh, wow. Vince Long has been serving as county commissioner since 2011. What letter grade would you give to Vince Long this year and why? One sentence, Hannah Crowe.
Vince Long has a wildly difficult job, and I'm sure very, very rewarding. I am not in the business of giving my boss a letter grade, but I do look forward to working with him and his staff moving forward if I'm fortunate enough to serve.
Will Crowley.
The staff serves as the pleasure of the commission, not the other way around. But I do believe that I'll need to look more closely at his record. I would not give him a letter grade. I would say based on the issues we're still dealing with after years, I would say unsatisfactory.
All right, Max Epstein.
I would say this year I'd give him a C minus with his unequal handling of the Lake Hall School and also transparency issues with Blueprints IMC and his close personal relationships with those named by Scott Maddox. I think he has a lot to answer for. He's an excellent administrator, but he needs to resolve these ethical issues.
Manny Joannis.
I think Vince is well respected. I believe that he has a very tough job. Letter B.
All right, Sabrina M. Allen.
I've heard nothing but good things about him, but I don't have a letter grade.
Okay.
I've heard good things about him.
Linda Bell.
I would give him a C, and just to clarify something, the county manager is not the boss. The county commission is the boss. The county manager serves as the pleasure of the county commission, and I think that's been part of the problem because they rubber stamp everything he brings.
I would give Vince Long an A minus, just because there's always a little bit of room of improvement. Vince Long was actually just recognized and received an international award for being a great county leader, and I think he's doing a fantastic job.
One more in the lightning round. This is a question from a reader. In the past three years, what community involvement have you coordinated or participated specifically in District Two? Will Crowley.
Yes, I joined members of my community on the day after Christmas to go into the Meadows Mobile Home Park, canvassing the community, finding out what was going on about their displacement, bringing them to a legal aid clinic, and documenting their responses to lift up their voices.
Thank you. Max Epstein.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Surely, in the past three years, what community involvement have you coordinated or participated in specifically in District Two?
Specifically, the cleanup of Lake Munson and looking at our waterways right now. Again, working on a $3 million grant with the county, and then also fixing the eminent domain issues going forward for the airport gateway that will affect Callan.
Manny Joannis.
My biggest volunteer efforts have been working 17 years with the Gobby High School Alumni Association. In those 17 years, we have raised over $200,000 to help students go on to TCC.
Thank you. Sabrina M. Allen.
I raised four grandchildren in District Two to become good citizens and eager learners and just good people, and I'm proud of them. That was my contribution to the community.
Thank you. Linda Bell.
Thank you. I've been the curmudgeon that gets things done in the district, as well as I served on the Florida Communities Trust as an appointee of the governor, and a lot of the projects that I approved had a direct impact on parks, waterways, and some of them impacted District Two.
Thank you. Christian Caban.
I'm proud to serve on the Board of the Children's Home Society of the Big Ben. And last year, I founded a little project called Dental Day where we provided 70-plus foster children with free dental care, all predominantly residing in 32304 and 32305 area code.
Hannah Crowe.
For the last several years, I started the Fort Braden Community Initiative alongside of our stakeholders, Leon County staff and our commission, doing things like a farmer's market, little free library programs, our walking path initiative, blood drives, and multiple annual events to engage our residents and to create an overall better quality of life in our district.
Max Epstein, this is the last lightning round question. We're seeing record heat waves around the globe. Some Tallahassee residents are opening their highest utility bills ever after a stretch of 100 degrees. Do you believe in climate change? And if so, how urgent is it as a problem? And what can a county commissioner do to actually make a difference? 15 seconds, we are racing to the end here.
All right, so yes, absolutely, climate change. It was an emergency about 20 years ago. As a county commissioner, I would advocate for rooftop solar subsidizing to help bring down those utility bills and keep money in people's pockets.
Manny Joannis.
I believe we have witnessed even hotter summers than what we have now. I'm not a climate change advocate. I do thank the city of Tallahassee for hedging purchases on natural gas, and that has helped keep the utility bill lower.
Thank you. Sabrina M. Allen.
I recently got a metal roof, and my utility bill has been cheaper. If anybody can afford one, everybody can't. But that's what, let's see, that's what I would do is stop so much waste of food. I have started, really, I'm frugal anyway. I have no unsecured debt. I haven't used a credit card. So I would, I would, energy, use less.
Okay, Linda Bell.
20 years ago, it was called global warming, and then there was no discernible warming, so they changed it to climate change. The climate is always changing. The question is whether it's anthropogenic, which is man-made or not man-made. So I do not tend to lean on the fact that it's man-made. There is always going to be climate change, but I'll, we give you a quote from John Kerry. He said, if we went to zero emissions and had a zero carbon footprint, it would do absolutely nothing because 90% of our emissions are coming from outside of this country.
Christian Caban.
I think anyone who was present in Leon County about a month ago and witnessed the record heat wave that came through would identify that climate change. We are experiencing climate change in Leon County. But I don't want to talk about the environment without addressing the continual issues that are going on in our constituents' backyards, Lake Munson and Woodville. We need to continue to address the septic tank crisis down there.
All right, Hannah Crowe.
Absolutely, environmental issues are all around us every day. As a county commissioner, as a resident, we should be doing everything we can to improve our carbon footprint, be good stewards of our environment, and as a commissioner, I would love to step up, learn more about that, and be part of the solution.
Thank you. Will Crowley.
Asking if I believe in the climate crisis is like asking if I believe in gravity. It doesn't matter if you believe in it. It's here. We see it all around us, and it's threatening the most vulnerable communities, and we can do something about it. We need to, in addition to increasing those incentives, we need to shore up the resiliency of our infrastructure.
Thank you. All right, y'all made it to closing arguments, and we've got to go quick. So we've got a minute for each of you to speak directly to voters. Manny Joannis, bring us through to the close.
I'm Manny Joannis, and I've lived in Leon County all my life, born here in 1956. I have a great passion to serve the community and to serve people. I think you can look at my history. I've had a history of serving the population here in Leon County. I have a great love for District Two. I want to see it do better, and I hope that the folks will consider me for their vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Sabrina M. Allen.
I was born and raised in Tallahassee at the Florida A&amp;M Hospital. I've been here all my life. I've lived in District Two for 38 years. I've taught for 25 years. I was a secretary for 20 years with the state and city. I am, as a teacher, a highly effective teacher. I have very few discipline problems. I have two graduate degrees, one from FSU and one from, and one from FAMU. And I ran for.
Thank you.
I ran for superintendent of schools 10 years ago and received 25,000 votes.
Thank you. Linda Bell.
As a former city manager and a former commissioner and mayor, I'm uniquely qualified to enter this job and to hit the ground running on day one without having to be so staff dependent. I would be able to be independent, be an independent voice for the good people of District Two and properly challenge things that need to be challenged rather than rubber stamping what the county manager says because I have another full-time job. I think that causes great compromise, and so I really believe with all my heart that it will be, need to be a full-time position, and I dedicate that my full-time position to that because I think the good people of District Two deserve nothing less than a full-time commissioner.
Thank you. Christian Caban.
First of all, I'd like to thank you all for hosting us. I'd like to thank the other candidates. I think this is all great, and I think it's awesome to see, you know, seven different people wanting to serve their community. That makes me feel very confident for Leon County as a whole. As a small business owner, I'm a product of District Two. I'm not someone that talks rhetoric. I want to continue to give back to my community. My track record is getting things done, and that's all I really have to say. My name is Christian Caban. I'm committed to results. Please check out my website, christiancaban.com. Thank you again.
Thank you. Hannah Crowe.
Thank you again for having us here today. I just want everyone to know that I have been doing this work for years before there was a race to run. I have been on the ground in our community, working with stakeholders, working with businesses, working with residents, asking these hard questions way before we were here today. You can trust me and know where my heart and my intentions are. My family is in the district. They've been there for decades. We are local business owners, blue collar and college educated family. So I'm here. Our family is here. I want to see District Two continue to get better, and you can learn more at votehannahcrowe.com.
Thank you. Will Crowley.
There are three things that set me apart from everyone else on this stage. First is the fiscal independence of my campaign, so you never have to wonder where my loyalty lies. The second is my strong background in public policy and budget, so I don't have to rely on unelected staff to do my thinking for me. I can spend my time listening to the voters. But most importantly, I've got a working class background. I waited tables for 10 years before I got my first state job. I know what it's like to pay your rent with tips from folks who don't see you as fully human. I know what it's like when your landlord sells your house out from underneath you with 15 days' notice, and I know what it's like to go to a county commission hall and pour your heart out to a brick wall. And that's why I'm asking you to vote for me on August 23rd so we can tear down that wall together. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Max Epstein.
So I hope you just look at my record and everything that I've done in our community, from Frenchtown to FAMU Way to Lake Munson. And I promise you that I will resolve those issues and the environmental issues, whether or not I'm elected or not. You can see me at maxforleon.com, and you can trust me because I have your best interests at heart. I'm doing this for the people. I'm not doing this for me. There's a lot of things I could have done that personally enriched myself, but that's not who I am.
Thank you.
Well, we want to thank all of our candidates, all seven of them, for appearing in person with us today. Also, thanks to the Tallahassee Democrat, the League of Women Voters of Tallahassee, WFSU Public Media, and all of our viewers for joining us for the program. You can find an audio replay of the forum and all of the others in the series on our YouTube pages, plus tallahassee.com and wfsu.org, and that recorded broadcast audio only. Tuesday, August 9th at 11:00 in the morning on WFSU, that's at 88.9 FM.
And we plan to have more forums this fall for the 2022 general election. So please like and follow all of us on our various social media platforms for updates.
And you can look for our special primary election guide in the Tallahassee Democrat with interviews with all of the candidates on the ballot, including these. That will be inserted in the paper on Sunday, August 7th. I can't thank the crew enough for making these forums possible. Thank you all who have viewed and submitted questions, and have an excellent day.